Okay.
Okay, meeting this workshop to order and at this time I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So we wanted to gather up here this evening to talk about parking facilities and in particular to talk about the potential of a parking facility on their Reagan Drive parking lot property that we own. And so I'm going to ask Robert to introduce David Moore that I'm introducing, but if you'll do a little bit better job of that, Robert.
Sure. This is, this is David Moore with Walter P. Moore Associates. I think David's out.
No relation.
No relation, but he claims it when he needs it. But David's out of the Atlanta office and we've talked to him and Brian out of the Houston office. And I think they have some folks in Charlotte as well. So they are a national firm that specializes in designing parking garages. And so we've worked with David before on just, we had him do the feasibility study a while back where he showed some options of possibilities at the Reagan Drive property with the present property that's owned. And so he can go through some of those this evening. And also just recently, we had him do a kind of a proposal of building a garage. And there's two different options we were talking about. He can talk about kind of a scaled down version that we discussed at media review with the possibility of adding on layers or floors later if that was, that was the desire. And so this last, one of the things we've handed out, this is kind of just a lot of narrative. That was the actual proposal. What really is a, we'll be talking about this evening for the most part are these larger forms here. And there's two options. One has more, you might say, lower level space than the other depending on how much we dig out. And so the idea is to leave the bottom floor for the convention center. And from that, David, I'll let you go ahead and just, just talk about what you, what you, the last part you gave to us and the estimated cost, et cetera.
Got you. Well, first off, thanks for inviting me to come here and talk about parking. It's actually something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been doing it for 30 plus years from the design aspect to the operation side of it to I even ventured off for a few years working for a parking equipment manufacturer. So doesn't mean I know everything, but been doing it a lot and parking is near and dear to my heart. Won't go into a lot of, you know, we've sent qualification information to Robert last year and that, but you know, Walter P. Moore, you know, we're a full service parking consulting design firm. We've designed over a thousand, not designed, but been involved in the design of probably over a thousand parking garages around the country and internationally as well. Not a lot international. So anyways, so as Robert said, we were engaged, I guess towards the end of last year to do a feasibility study on the Reagan Drive site. So I just pulled up here real quick. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the property. And so just, you know, thought I would show that. If you don't mind, I can stand up and maybe point a little bit rather than trying to follow my hand and making people sick. So, you know, with the gray area being the existing surface, this isn't owned by the city, the little square in the bottom right, but then back behind the house, the city owns even behind there. So when we first looked at it, we thought, we'd look at it with some options. Back then, the city was considering possibly buying that vacant piece of property there. And the thought was there, it just makes it, you know, more of a rectangular site. You could get a more, you know, typical, very efficient garage in there. So we did do a concept if the city was going to buy that. And it kind of fills almost the whole area. You'd have to take down the house. So it's some added demolition, you know, construction cost in that. And then we ended up focusing on, I think the city went away from considering or to buy that. So we focused on then just kind of in this gray area behind the fire station, you know, what, what could we do in this gray area? Leave the house, you know, it could be a future expansion or just, you know, to save on those costs. So we completed our study. We delivered a, I don't know how many page, you know, report with, you know, concepts and pros and cons and a bunch of things. So I thought I'd just start here. And these were the concept plans out of the feasibility study. So again, just looking at the site that the city owns, not buying the other one and trying to fit it in, not disturb the house, of course, not the fire station. So we came up with, with two concepts. And there's probably variations to these as well, depending on going down with the garage versus all up. You know, the city's real interested in maintaining a high clearance parking below this garage for vehicles for the convention center or just other large, you know, trucks. So this we call option one, which you can see the, the green fluorescent green, that's the ramp and the gray is parking. So this option here is what we would call an express ramp garage. So basically all your parking in this garage is on flat surfaces. And then there's just a short express ramp. There's no parking on it so that you can go a full floor in a shorter distance. So it's a steeper ramp. You know, very, I would say typical or common garage, but we, and we did the concept based off of getting like 400 spaces in there. So in this design, it's hard to tell in the elevations, but the thought here was Hillville, which is on the right, is 17 feet higher than the alley that goes between the church and the fire station. So I'm, you know, looking at it this way. So what we've looked at, and I'll show a section that'll help explain it, was the main entrance to the garage be off of Hillville. And so what you're seeing there, and like I said, you can't tell in the elevation in 2D drawing, but this garage would be flat at that plus 17 elevation, let's say that, and then go up from there. And you would excavate into this hill and you could have like 14 foot clear parking below there, you know, when you take out the depth of the structure. Then we, we looked at cutting it down to like 200 spaces. You know, the benefits with this are it's, most of your parking's flat floor. So it's, you know, a little less confusing. The one con is, you know, in parking design, we all look at efficiency. How many square foot per space? And a good design for a garage like this, I would say is in around the 325 square foot per space. That's the parking space and half of a drive aisle, the way we calculated. The one kind of con, this versus the next option that I'm going to show is this is a little less efficient because you're building all of those green ramps, which is concrete, and there's no parking on it. So it raises your efficiency, you know, square foot per space a little bit compared to the next one.
What's the net benefit though?
With this one here, it's, it's easier to get around for your customers.
Easier to navigate.
Easier to navigate because you can't tell, but there's like, we call it a bay of parking is roughly 60 feet.
So you give up efficiency for ease of use?
For, yes.
Okay.
Yep. That's, you know, there's more than that, but you know, that's, you know, yep. So then we did an option, well, I won't go into the pros and cons. I touched on, you know, some of those. I can give you all this presentation. You can, you know, presentations, just a PDF. But then, then we looked at kind of the same footprint, but make it a little more efficient. And this one has some advantages where you could, I think it's very important to have that high level parking. But if you didn't want to have high clearance parking below, with both options, you could actually take your garage down from that 17 too and take advantage of the slope that's there. But then you do away with the high clearance parking. But in this one here, it's about the same footprint we looked before. But if you look at the, again, the green and the blue, those are ramps. Now there's parking on it. Okay. So this garage compared to the other one, it's more efficient because you're pretty much parking every square inch, square foot of this. But I would say comparing the two pros and cons from the two options is this one here is just a little, I'd say, less customer friendly, convenient because almost all your parking, you're parking on slope surfaces. Not that that's a bad thing. I mean, all garages, most all garages, you park on, you know, ramps at some point in the garage. So what this one does is instead of having two flat bays and then just this express ramp and then just stacking them on top, this one, that blue, you would come in off of Hillville down here, the view on the bottom left, that's like the first floor. So you'd come in off of Hillville and there'd be two bays of parking that are sloped up. And you only go half a floor, roughly five and a half feet if you go, if we're going 11 foot floor to floor. So in this scheme, the two blues are one way parking. So you come in and go up the right one and make a left. And if you want to keep going up, you go over and then you go up the green. And it's basically you're going half a level, half a level, half a level, and then down, you know, kind of the same thing. So it's a little more efficient. If you want to say a con, more parking on slope surfaces, but, but a very.
Still have the higher.
Exactly. The same thing.
All of these options provide for the convention.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see in the, in the ISO there. But again, you come in and the first 45 feet, kind of the white area down at least here is, is going to be flat parking. And then you start up on the blue. So you're already, you know, you're at 17 feet here and then you're going five more feet up. So you even have more clearance and I'll show you in a section. But yes, that would maintain the, the high clearance.
I think you're saying that all the options do.
Yes.
All the options.
Yep. Yep.
All the options have an elevator as well?
Yeah. And this one, you know, our proposal, or at least, you know, I guess at this point the city has scaled back. Instead of 400 building today, maybe start with 200 and then adding like Robert said, which is doable. For 200 spaces, even for 400 space, probably one elevator. You know, we, the design team would do the analysis, but rule of thumb I always use is one elevator for every 500 spaces.
Okay.
So in this one, for sure, 200 spaces, you're going to have one elevator. And my assumption would be it would be in this, I wish I could point, but kind of in this, in this bottom view, the bottom left corner where you'd come down to grade, get out onto Hillville, you know, that would.
How many floors of parking you got?
Well, right here, it is, this is five or five levels, I think it is, to get the 400 spaces. I think I have the next view.
Hey, David, let me, let me just make sure that we're, that I, we're heading in the right direction here. I think maybe this, the latest thing we did that we talked about had the, that could be built upon, had the same, I think, philosophy as far as the way it was designed. You're working off the feasibility study right now. You were talking about when we talked, it could go like five or six levels.
Exactly. Yep.
The latest, the latest thing we did was to ask him to do something that went like two levels and then build upon that. So I think we probably ought to talk about that first.
Yeah. So, yeah. So the one B we just talked about, that's the more efficient garage, but you know, half a floor, half a floor, nice square box, fit right in there. To get the 200 spaces, this is probably what you would end up with. Envision, this would be Hillville and above. So you see, you'd come in where it says Hillville, the white's flat. You go up blue, half a floor, turn around, go up green, another half a floor. And there's parking both on blue and green. Then flat, up half a floor, half a floor. And then we probably end it as you see there at level three. And that would get you about 200, 200 spaces in the garage. That's not counting what you get below. We're estimating 70 to 90 spaces below. That's vehicles. Keep in mind, you know, there's going to be columns that go all the way down to grade and to footings that, you know, to get big trucks in there, you're not going to get 75 trucks in there. But you should be able to come in the alley and, you know, we'll design it and check it that, you know, even maybe a full length semi could come in, but he's going to have to, you know, come into one of the wide bays and maybe turn between a 36 foot grid and maybe, you know, park long ways and just take up a bunch of space. But, you know, could get in there and then find a route for him to come out. But if you were just parking cars, employees, you know, you might get 75 to 90. And I'll show you where the difference is between 70 and 95. But right on to that answers your question. That's the scaled back version from the feasibility study. It's the same design.
Yeah. And that kind of, that kind of, I guess coincides with the latest thing.
Yep.
That we did. And just make sure you understand, David, that I'm not misinforming. The, when we asked the last time, the 195 spaces that we, that was generated from the last, from the last proposal, that, that is, is that total?
No.
That's in addition to the bottom four?
Yeah, that's kind of what you see in that footprint right there of the garage. Yeah. Then there would be the 70 to 95.
Okay.
On the bottom.
Yeah. So this is getting an additional, the options we talked about, both are getting an additional 195 spaces. The options were that we discussed whether it would be a pre-cast or a form place. And I think both are possible.
Yep.
Here. So just making sure they understand.
Okay. And, and so to kind of jump to the bottom line, because we've got some other information that we need to get out on the table and talk about. The estimated cost
Yes.
Are, is that what you're looking at, Robert?
Yeah, I've got the estimated cost, David, on the last, from the last proposal that we did, just kind of, just kind of seeing where we're looking at.
Yep.
For the, for the precast, yeah, for, for precast, the total cost, I think is like 6.27 million. And the port cast in place would be like 7.3 million, so to speak. And that, that's the.
But I have a drawing that'll clarify what that is because that's not all just the cost of the garage structure itself.
Yeah. Yeah. That includes.
That's what we estimate for the excavation, cutting into the hill.
So what's the net benefit of each? I mean, like, why would we go to the cast in place? What makes that better?
Okay. First off, maybe to answer yours, and we'll go into a lot of detail. We based our proposal here, you know, typically a design team's based off of a percentage, your design fee's a percentage of what the estimated construction cost is. So that's what's in that proposal letter there. Prior to pandemic, I'll say, in the world we live in today, you know, a standalone garage like this, forget the excavation, but if you were building this garage just on a flat, you know, surface and you go up, a pre-cast, which typically is the cheaper cost upfront, but you, and I'll answer your question, you spend more down the road in pre-cast versus a cast in place PT is more expensive upfront, but typically less maintenance ongoing. But prior to the pandemic, a garage like this, I always tell clients, because I'd say ask how much it costs, and we always do it per space. You know, a couple of years ago, I've been very comfortable saying this would be $20,000 per space. Now, again, that's the structure. That's the concrete, the columns, the footings, the garage itself, not any extreme or excessive site work. Cast in place, I would say probably 24, 25,000. Again, a couple of years ago. We based our proposal here off of 25,000 a space for pre-cast and 30,000 a space for cast in place. And, and we've based it off of some historical data, some other projects around the country we've seen, unfortunately due to supply chain, you know, just cost of materials, you know, resources that, you know, I would say everything in our lives that we buy or whatever is going up. But anyway, so that's what we based it off of. So back to your question, pre-cast is typically the cheaper of the two construction methods. And typically, pre-cast is cheaper and you can get it done faster because most of your garage is being built at a factory wherever. And then they're shipping the parts and the pieces in. So you do all the site work, you do your foundations. Columns can even be pre-cast, but sometimes they're poured. And then you haul in these members. And that was the thing that there was some concern. But, you know, a pre-cast tee is typically about 12 foot wide and let's say 60 foot long. And it's one piece they're shipped in and they're picked up and they, so you kind of, pre-cast, you build the garage like a Lego block. It's cheaper upfront, but it's in the long run typically costs more if you maintain it. The reason being is you have way more joints in the structure. You know, between every 12 foot tee, you have a joint that gets sealed and, you know, all these other places. And where you have joints and when you seal them, if it's done right, I mean, I've seen pre-cast parking garages that are 60, 70 years old. They might not be in great shape, but I mean, they last, you know, 50 years. No reason to show them last 50. But there's more opportunity places for water to get in. And that's what's bad for a concrete parking garage. Where the cast in place is basically the concrete is, comes in on trucks and it's pumped in. And you have these PT tendons that are tensioned in the slab before you pour the concrete. And so basically you pay more, a little more for the design because the construction cost is higher. But you just get a, I don't want to say better because they're both good, but you get, you have less joints. So there's less opportunity for water to come in. So typically in a cast in place, you know, what you need to put aside years down the road typically is a little less than what you would for a pre-cast because there's just more.
I got you.
More places.
Okay.
So the five, six, seven million that Robert said, let me just go here real quick and stop me at any time. But so this is that one B option that's half a floor, half a floor. And we looked at it in two ways. So if you look at the yellow, the first option for excavation would be is underneath the structure, you cut into that hill, basically where it's, where it's yellow. And then the brown, it's brown actually, but it looks pink. Where it says plus 17, that's about 45 feet wide. What you can do in this option is don't excavate underneath that pink area. So that would remain just slab on grade. But it limits how much parking underneath. You, you know, you could only go as deep as this 11, I mean, the yellow section. So this kind of explains that in much more detail. So you got the alley over here and there's some setback, although that alley kind of skews.
That's the second page you are. If you want to flip the page in that big.
So here's Hillville, where it's written, we're just estimating there might be a 17 foot setback from, you know, Hillville to where the garage structure would start. Nothing's set in stone. So then in that scheme, you can see, I shouldn't say 131, see that 131 should be 45. Okay. That's roughly 45 foot of the flat. So you can see we're not, we're leaving the existing earth under there. So if you see where it says existing grade, that's kind of how that hill parking goes up now. So in this option, you would only go back, and it's not 394, I don't know why it's pulling up. It's like 135 feet, but you would only cut into the hill that much. And you would have your high clearance. You can see it's 19 feet over there, 14 foot as deep in as you get. And those are the ramps, you know, are going half a floor and half a floor. It's kind of confusing in there. But we estimated the cost of the excavation and the retaining walls to do what you have there. Because if you think about it, where it says 14, 5 clear, that grade vertical member, that'd be a retaining wall, holding back all that dirt that's towards Hillville. To just excavate that and have a smaller parking area underneath, we just estimated based off of numbers of, you know, cubic yards of hauling off and 17 foot wall and how long and stuff. We estimate about $650,000 just to do the site work. So the number Robert said, you know, if you take my $25,000 per space and multiply it by 195 that we used, that's not the number Robert's talking about because you got $650,000.
Well, this is saying one million percent of the excavation.
Well, we based it off of the, I want to say the worst case scenario. If you let me get to the next one, and, you know, and everything can be adjusted. So that would be kind of a scaled back version. The next option, if you want to take advantage of the whole site, so the whole footprint of the garage in yellow, so that you can park as many cars, trucks as you want underneath it. Okay. So in that section, you can see we're coming all the way over to where the face of the garage is. So you're parking that 14 foot clearance under a slab above. So the million dollars is basically, the 650, if you stopped it, you add 45 more feet.
So the first option called 650, we're losing 70 parking spaces underneath.
No, you're losing about 25 because I think this, this one here, we estimate 95.
So that means it occupies 25 more space.
Correct.
Okay. That's what we need right there.
Yeah.
And, and again, that's, you know, vehicles, not semis, but yeah.
David, if I could get you to kind of a really quick, we could to give you the opportunity to wrap up in like 30 seconds or less, because we have other information that we, like I said a couple of minutes ago, we need to get out on that. said a couple of minutes ago, we need to get out on the table.
I think that's all I was going to show. I mean, the last thing I was going to say, like I said, you know, there's probably a couple other variations. I mean, there's a couple, if you, you know, didn't want to do a bunch of that cutting and the million and just take advantage of the slope, you're going to get, lose the high clearance and stuff. The only other thing we didn't...
We need the hot there.
Yeah.
So that's out of the options we need to discuss.
Not the only other...
Say it again.
That's out of the options we discuss, because we need the hot there.
Yeah.
Right. Just real quick, and I was driving up here and just thinking, and, you know, we had to, we had to limit how many, I guess, options and what we looked at in our feasibility study, but, you know, if this moves forward, I think there is even a, Larry and I were talking about it before this started, that there might be another option, if it would be considered, but it's going to add some more site work, and that is, we might be able to fit a longer garage, kind of right behind the fire station, but it would go back, you'd have to remove the house back there, okay? But you could get possibly, I don't know, the problem is the way that alley skews back there, I don't know if it would fit, but if we could get about 122 feet and 270-foot long, we can get a garage that, it looks like this, only cut one of these bays off. So you're about 270-foot long, your green ramp goes you a full floor, you don't have to go half a floor, half a floor. And it's just, it's even a more efficient garage than that, and it's, you know, 50% is flat-floor parking now, you know?
How many spaces?
I didn't do the evaluation on that, but, you know, you know, you're adding, you're still going to have some excavation, because you could still do this garage at the 17-feet and cut underneath it and have the high clearance and do the garage up. It'd probably be a couple levels, maybe three levels to get the 200 spaces, I didn't do the count.
Hey, David, let's...
But that, you know, that's something we can even...
That's the mechanical side of things that we talked about.
Yes.
I think the others thing that they want to talk about is really not what type of garage, but if we're going to go there.
Right, right. So with that, let me use that segue, let's hand out first, Robert.
Survey.
Well, no, it doesn't matter. They need them both. So the chamber, okay, has done a survey of, okay? They have done a survey, they sent it out to how many guys?
130.
Mark is in Nashville, he'd be here tonight, Mark Adams.
Yeah, about 130.
And the responses, was it same there? Uh, how many responded? 45 businesses? Okay. So this is in a nutshell, the information that they have received, and I need that kind of top front to there. And then, the other thing I asked Robert to do, because I don't think, I think we had it available, but not copies of this nature, but this handout is to show, to take the months of October and November of this past year, and to look at the number of permit sales based upon the old library lot and the Parkway Manhattan garage, okay? And so with that, I think that I would suggest, if, Robert, if you want to go over it really quickly, there's some very interesting comments in the comment section here, that I would think that you would want to particularly look at. As to the responses to the questions, Robert, could we go over those really quickly?
Yeah, yeah, the questions, you can see, they're just like, I think there's six questions on here.
Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, and I've got, and basically, they did, 45 businesses responded, out of 41, 41 out of 45 said that they felt there was a need for employee-only permit parking. And they surveyed the businesses from traffic light six to traffic light 10, and then, basically, when you look down to number four, for example, how often do employees face a challenge in parking, of all the responses, 87%...
Well, this is number three.
Yeah, yeah, number three, 87%, yeah, number three. And either went, either had frequently or always, which is basically 87% of those who responded.
Bearing in mind, this is 45 businesses.
45 businesses, and so, you know, you have to consider the number of that population there. And then, on number four, you'll see that, how do you rate the current parking situation? That really, none of the, none of the 41 businesses that responded said good, all said poor or average. And then they were just kind of split down the middle, whether or not we should have, there should be a park-and-ride alternative. So I'm not sure if that's really something that is feasible. But as Cindy said, there were some helpful comments that were provided by the businesses in there, and Scott or Dave can anything they want to, to this, but as we, in reading through this, most of the people did talk about the need for permit-only employee parking. A lot of people felt like, you know, wanted to see something at the library, but the old library lot, but the problem is there, we know that when you do something there, you're going to take those spaces out of inventory for probably a year.
That leaves...
At least, and so that would already exacerbate a problem.
But we could do that if we built this other deck first, to deviate it, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yeah, that is certainly an option. And you'll see, one of the business owners there actually put his name on there, and had quite a bit of verbiage there to look through, but anyway, there were people who were, it looked like the, of the 41 that responded, the theme was that there was a need for permit-only parking. And Cindy, I don't know if there's anything else that we need to say?
Well, just to give them the opportunity to look at some of these comments, there are some, and again, you know, I think we have to be careful, because this is only 45 businesses responding, out of 128. So that's not a great, I mean, it's not a horrible response rate, but it's not a great response rate. Okay, so that's, if you'll go to this list, this handout, this, these are, I presume, you did the, explain what this list means to you.
Yeah, this is, this, this, these are just the summaries of October, November, of the permit users, main permit users.
So to answer your question...
I was going to say, out of the 45, is all 11 that uses our permits, did they respond to this? Did the 11 businesses on here, is it...
No, 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 this is like, Anacysta wasn't in this survey, because they're not from lot six to 10. We were looking specifically for businesses from lot six to 10, about, since we're focusing on the Reagan Drive garage, and then Dave did a, Dave did a Google Earth thing, just to kind of, I think we talked about this.
It is up there right now.
Just to kind of see the proximity of what Reagan Drive is, really, in reality, a pretty...
Commissioner Reagan attached to, the listing of the businesses that bought is attached, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All of them for the months of October and November.
And you'll see, Cindy's pointed this out, Cindy's pointed this out a time or two. We have basically two large users, and then the next highest is 20 and below, and there's just a couple, couple three that buy 20, and most, most of the users are either, you know, single or up to five. And so that's, that's, that's the, most of the, most of the businesses who buy permits are by very few. But this is just kind of a summary of a typical busy month of the purchases, purchasing of permits, and of course, we, that's based on our, with our current pricing, et cetera, obviously, so we don't know how that will change.
So I think, the mayor and I got a chance to chat today with Robert and Greg, you know, I think this is where the policy thinking comes into play, right? What, how far should the city go in providing this benefit? I really had intended to have Seth do some research, and I still think it would just be interesting to do, Seth, so this is my ask, is to try to research and find out, and you can do this with David Ball. I think, and I'm sort of kind of making it up, that this, that the city doing monthly permit employee parking probably began when the creation of the C1 zoning occurred, which was, did somebody tell me when that was? Did I hear the 70s, or is David Ball in here? No. So the C1 zone was created by a bunch of those guys over there on that wall, okay, to say that a business did not have to provide employee parking.
Right.
Did not have, well, didn't have to provide parking, period. Right? And that, and it doubly appears to be when the city started selling monthly permits. We're going to, I'm going to have Seth research it and verify if my made-up story there is correct, and I think it's going to be pretty much that way. So, you know, it's trying to get as much information out for all of us to think about and determine what direction that we do need to go with this permit parking. As we talked about at mid-year review, we have very openly, admittedly stated that we have sold too many permits. We have, you know, we've sold a number beyond our capacity, that's why there's an agenda item this evening associated with limiting the number until such time as we might have enough to not have a limit. I don't know that we ever will, but, and then, of course, there's the item on the agenda associated with increasing the fees, the monthly permit fees that we also discussed at mid-year review. So with that, we'll, I'll shut up and let you all have some conversation and...
One last thing I want to clarify, Cindy, so that we discuss it, the garage that we last looked at, David, this is what, what'd you say, it's a two and a half?
Yeah.
Two and a half level?
Exactly. Yep, to get the 195, 200 spaces.
Okay, to get the 195.
When do we need to make this decision?
Well, I think that's up to you all, I really do. I think that is certainly your call. We do have, I think part of what Larry handed out is, could be just a tidge confusing, this is actually what Larry handed out, I think you thought it might have been on the agenda, but it's not, is a proposal with Walter P. Moore to design some kind of parking facility at Reagan Drive. And so just the design cost alone are over $450,000.
The only thing I'll say on this, this Corin cast or whatever, I am completely anti anything that requires huge amounts of maintenance over time. I mean, we've run into this at the aquarium parking garage. I don't know, is that cast-in-place, I don't know what it is, anyway, we have a lot of problems.
It's precast.
Okay, so it's precast, so essentially, we're getting an aquarium parking garage over there that's going to be leaking, and we're going to need fixing in 10 or 15 years. I'd rather build something that'll stand the test of time for the extra million bucks, personally. I know it'll take longer, but, you know, the city, the city's doing well, and we should build a quality product there. And so you're a little ho-hum on whether, well, I'm not saying it's a bad garage or any of that stuff, but it sounds to me like there's going to be leaking galore in there.
Well, it's all in your, how proactive you are to maintain.
Okay, well, we're going to build a good one.
Okay. I mean, you know...
I mean, at least that's what I would vote for.
What I see, or I've seen, you know, a lot of owners, people, you know, they spend 10 million, 20 million, build a garage, and then for 10 years, they don't do anything.
Right, they never pressure wash it, they never do anything.
They didn't do anything, and then all of a sudden, now you've got all these cracks, water's leaking, and now you're spending a lot. So, I mean, you could mitigate it a little bit, but, I mean, you have to have an ongoing year-two, really, budget, and, you know, assess it and seal those cracks, and then you won't have that kind of major, you know, down the road.
You know, a couple of statements I'd like to make is, I think the sampling of 45 businesses may be a little shy, maybe we need to dive in a little deeper and actually find out how many parking, or businesses need parking. And then also, you've got, you know, the possibility, we've even talked about, you know, are all the parking lots in town full at capacity for so many days? You know, what is the need that we have for parking, first of all?
Well, I think we need to go past traffic light six. It takes me 10 minutes to walk from the aquarium to the Believe It or Not, which is in that zone you're talking about, which is not beyond the pale for somebody in decent shape, right, to walk from that parking deck down to Anacysta, the aquarium. I mean, some people might enjoy that walk, right? So maybe we need to open the polling up to some of those businesses as well, because the big anchor businesses are actually down at the other side, mostly, and they're the ones that were the huge problems.
Yeah.
We're the ones causing the issue by and large, needing the, so I think you should open it up a little bit. Although 45 is not a bad sample, they all agree our parking sucks, because it does, I mean, we, it's in bad shape, it's not our fault, it just, we're victims of our own success here, and we've got to fix it, which is why we're looking at it.
And let me, Commissioner, let me add this as well, another item on the agenda, this is, I think it's on the agenda, where are we on the expansion of the Bishop Lane parking lot?
You're talking about the CDM Smith?
Oh, yeah, yeah, where we are with that is that they are, at any time now, supposed to have something ready to go out to bid.
They're working on the electric.
So to, I mean, that's...
That'll help.
That's 40 more spaces.
Yeah, that'll help.
So to, to throw that on the table as well.
And I wanted to mention park-and-ride, too, so they were split on park-and-ride. Park-and-ride would work, number one, if we had a place to do it.
Yeah.
And number two, if it was free.
Yeah.
Like, a lot of employees would opt to do park-and-ride if they didn't have to pay $60 a month for a permit, right? And they had a consistent, well, we had a trolley system or something moving back and forth. But I don't, I don't know where you build the park-and-ride to begin with, right? That makes sense for us, I don't know what we really own.
Until they have, wait, at 11 o'clock at night, bus, wait for a bus to get there and take them back to their car.
Could easily, could easily happen, yeah, at parade night.
These figures here, are they 2021 figures? Yes, they are. All right. 2021 is an unusual year. We're not going to do that again anytime soon. I'm just thinking, not going off, where you get some thought? Yeah, yeah, no, those are, of course, those are permit, those are, those are employees that are probably, so you're saying you probably don't have as many... Five years ago, did you have employee parking permit in the college?
No, the problems that...
Yes, we did.
We did five years ago.
Well, Anacysta's been a big player.
Yeah.
Five years ago, we had this need permits out.
No, no. It is, it is the impact of... Two businesses, basically. They're at the top of the list, okay? And that, and that's why I just say...
We're restricting the number of passes they can have.
Yeah.
And restricting the number they can have.
Yeah, and they start to say anything negative about those businesses, because those businesses...
They bring a huge amount of business, and I don't have a lot of a place.
Exactly, they have contributed heavily to the city coffers, there's no doubt about it. But that is where, that tells the story now. But for those couple of businesses, I would still submit to you that there would be a need for some additional monthly permit parking. I do, I do think that that's a reasonable, don't you, Commissioner Smith and De Zier? I think that's a reasonable thought, that it's not just those two businesses, right? But it is the expansion of business and the economy in town, that I agree with you, 2021 was an abnormal year.
You know, another crazy idea is, offer Reagan Drive, you know, operate it with gates, entrance and exit, but offer for permit-free parking, to see how many people would use it, to see how bad they need the parking.
Oh, I see what you're saying, just open it up for employees.
Employees only, but make it free parking.
Now, he's saying employees only, but make it free.
But make it free.
Yeah, and they'd have a permit card, and you'd have the gate, the in and out, keep the regular customers out, that might be...
Probably have to beat him off with this, too.
Yeah.
But, you know, that might be a good, just a sampling, to see if...
Hey, Robert?
Yes.
So I'm struggling with the totals here, like, it says 21 at the aquarium parking garage, and I'm reading like four. Like, where does that total come from? Is it all of this added up?
Oh, yeah, now, that, there were some, there were some more in here, I just can make it two pages, there were a lot of them, several ones and twos. I just put that down there, so you can kind of see that most of them are small purchasers, so that won't add up exactly.
So that does not add up?
Not exactly, but it's within 10 or 15.
I got you, I got you.
Well, I don't know if I should be quiet, or if I can just share a thought?
Well, you're a parking expert, so by all means.
Well, you know, listening to all this, you know, first off, it doesn't make any of you feel better, that, you know, I would say most, a lot of cities have the same problem.
Sure.
And I'm sure you all know, maybe better than me, that, you know, in my experiences, you know, employees will try to beat the system or take advantage of it, you know? They could have a spot that, you know, could be, could be free, but to them, it's too far, and if they could park on-street or in a lot they're not supposed to, and they never get caught, they're going to do it. You know, a lot of cities have the problem where employees are parking on the on-street, and then you weigh that thing of charging, but then you're turning away your visitors that you want and stuff. So... So the first thing came to mind, and a few people mentioned it, is, you know, is, how do I say this, you know, what is your real problem? Because do you have some employees that have a spot and are supposed to be parking somewhere, and they could be parking in a hotel, and they're not, you know, patrolling whatever, and they're just, you know, because it's more convenient, and you could have employees parking other places that have a permit, but, you know, although if they're parking elsewhere, then it should, you know, it should be opening up more spaces for your visitors, but, you know...
No, it's lack of space.
That won't last, that won't last long if they are.
It is.
There's too, parking's too difficult even for the hotel development, so...
Right.
They're, they're going to be all over something like that. So I think that what I hear partially being said is to ask the Chamber, in the capacity of the Chamber, to pursue further the survey. And Mark, Mark is maybe on the speakerphone, but we, we, Robert and Greg and I talked to him earlier today, to see how much more information they can get, this is ridiculous what I'm going to say right now, but I've said a lot of ridiculous things last six and a half months, so here we go. Did you ask him if their company does feasibility?
Yeah, we talked about it, we did kind of talk about what you all do, and you were making a lot of...
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a parking, parking study practice.
I mean, I think it could be that important that we hire somebody like this company to take a look at it.
That does, does supply and demand.
Wonder how much money it costs.
What, what we do is, we would come in with a crew, a group, we would do actual inventories of all, you know, city-owned or where these people are parking, and do, you know, inventory counts, do actual, you know, real-time capacity counts to get real numbers. I assume your numbers you're getting is from the parking equipment that's, you know, counting, and I'm not saying that it's not working, and, you know, but sometimes it's, you know...
Yeah, just to, I, I get you, but the real thrust here, David, is for us to try to determine what the, what the demand is.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we would hold stakeholder meetings and meet with, you know, you know, all, you know, I don't know, it's all 140 of the businesses, but no, we, we would, we would...
Would you do, like, a survey kind of thing, like what the Chamber CVB has done?
Yep, we can do that as well.
Okay. Is, have we already paid you to do that in the other fees? We've paid you, or is this, I was, she's there, I don't know, squeeze out a little bill there. I mean, do you, not to put you on the spot, but did you talk to him about cost?
I have not, I have not, about doing that.
About how much, something of that?
Based on our footprint, and do you have any idea?
How many, how many total spaces the city owned, do you know, just a rough idea, or how many?
How many did we own?
Yeah.
Well, we know that, it's a thousand...
We are at 370 plus 370 plus 100, so you're talking about, you're talking about 840, 940 plus Reagan Drive's about, about 1200.
Don't you said have somewhere the number of parking spaces and parking facilities, and then on the city website?
That's city-owned.
Yeah, for city-owned, yeah, that's the city-owned, that's not...
Right.
So we've got, you've got about 1,100, 1,200 city-owned spaces.
That's correct.
Throughout the city, in different places.
Right. I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm just throwing a number out there, whatever, I've talked to Jamie, Jamie, a girl, heads up our parking study group, she's in Houston, so I'd give her a call. But I, I could see 15 to $20,000 maybe for a study like this.
It'd be well worth it.
You think?
Yeah, I do.
But I, I think, but...
Then we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I think, and it has to go beyond our capacity. I mean, what we're trying to find out, that the Chamber and the CVB has, has done credible work to get there, is indeed, what's the demand.
Right.
And I think, I think maybe what she's trying to say is, what, based on where people work?
Yep.
Where they're located, where do we need...
No, I'm not even saying, I'm saying, I agree with that part, too. I'm saying, really, how many spaces should the city responsibly use taxpayer dollars to build?
To provide, right.
To provide.
Based on demand.
Yeah, based on demand.
What we're going to charge, is the business going to pay for it, and how much are we going to utilize those parts?
Yeah, yeah, how many?
We built 195 spots, and spent all this money, and then we're going to sell 40 of them, you know?
Yeah, yeah, because let's remember, prior to these top two businesses coming into play, the Parkway Garage was very underutilized.
Yep.
And that end, being developed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That end is coming along strong.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, right?
Hey, Scott.
They can hear you.
Scott, hey, I also want to remind everybody that we really have two shifts, so we have basically like a morning shift and an evening shift.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, if a business responds, if they need, let's say if they have business response and say they need certain parking spots, that might be 15 for the morning shift.
Is that clarified on the survey?
No, Ryan, it's not, and that's just some of that's on us, we need to dig deeper.
When we do the next survey, we need to jump into that, because that could be, meaning that, yeah, it wasn't clarified on the survey, so, meaning it could be twice the number. If they interpret it one way, it could be twice the number, if not, it's correct, so I don't know, so we, we need to figure that out. On the next survey, we need to redo that.
Let's, let's, if everybody's agreeable, let these guys, if it's 20 or less, do the feasibility study, we know what we're talking about, that'll give us good direction on where we're going.
Got my vote.
Yeah, and, and if it is, then I can, we have a project budget associated with this, and that big list of projects y'all approved in the general fund, that capital list of projects, so there's a project account that exists, and if there's an agreement that's